The Mayor and City Council welcome you to the Peoria City Council Meeting. As a courtesy to others, please silence all phones. If you would like to address an issue that is on the agenda, or if you would like to speak to the council regarding a non-agenda item, please complete a speaker request form which can be found in the front lobby of the Peoria City Council chambers, or in the tray to the left of the speaker's podium. Please place the completed speaker request form in the second tray to the left of the speaker's podium labeled "Request to Speak." All speakers will have three minutes to complete their comments. A countdown clock is easily visible on the left side of the wall behind the City Council dais. Only items listed on the agenda may be addressed by the council. Since items presented as part of the speaker request have not been listed on the agenda, and due to the requirements of the open meeting laws, the council will be unable to respond to items presented as part of the speaker's request. However, please be aware that your comments will be noted. The speaker's name will be called to speak at the appropriate time in the order that the forms were received. Thank you for your interest and participation in the Peoria City Council Meeting.
Peoria City Council Meeting will now come to order. Please rise for a moment of quiet reflection in the Pledge of Allegiance led by Council Member Edwards. Clerk, will please call the roll?
Mayor Carlet.
Here.
Vice Mayor Binzbacher.
Here.
Councilmember Patena.
Here.
Councilmember Edwards.
Here.
Councilmember Finn.
Here.
Councilmember Hunt.
Here.
Councilmember Leoni.
Here.
Council Liaison Bowden.
Here.
And Council Liaison Camacho.
Here.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the Peoria City Council Meeting of March 15, 2016. The first item on the agenda this evening is the Consent Agenda. Tonight's Consent Agenda includes liquor licenses or other types of items that require a public hearing. If there is any member of the public present who wants to address a public hearing on the Consent Agenda, please complete a speaker request form and place it in the bin next to the speaker's podium. This item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and heard during the normal course of the regular agenda. Is there a member of the public that would like to address a public hearing that is on the Consent Agenda? Right, seeing none. Council, are there any items to be removed from Consent? Is there a motion on the Consent Agenda?
I'll motion.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion, a second. Council, please vote. And the Consent Agenda passes unanimously. We will now move on to new business. The next item on the agenda is 19R, Budget Amendment, Fire Medical Department Certificate of Necessity Ambulance Service. Mr. Swenson.
Thank you, Mayor Carlet. And as the presenters are coming down, let me just say a little bit about this. Of course, as the Mayor and Council are very well aware, a high priority for you has been that we move forward with improving our emergency medical service in the city in some pretty substantial and significant ways. And most importantly, that includes patient transport, the ambulance service that our citizens from time to time need in our community. And we have felt for some time that our ability to provide the very best emergency medical hinges on our ability to take a level of control from the private sector back to the city in the delivery of medical services and in particular, ambulance service. So what you have before you tonight is a very important step in that very important process of enhancing one of the most important services that the city provides to its citizens. So Jeff Tyne and Jim Bratcher will be making the presentation. Bobby Reese, our Fire and Medical Department Chief, is unable to be here because he is at the accreditation conference, and we got word from him this afternoon that the department has been re-accredited. So that's also some very good news, but that's the reason that Chief Reese is not here. So with that, I'll turn it over to Deputy City Manager Jeff Tyne. Jeff?
Great. Thank you, Mr. Swenson. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Appreciate the opportunity to once again speak to you on this, of course, being a subject of much discussion with the City Council the last couple of years. As you recall, back in November of 2014, after a discussion at study session, the council did provide staff the direction to seek that certificate of necessity application, that that business license, so to speak, to get into the ambulance service. From there, there was a very extensive discussion that was done at the council seminar in August of 2015 to also go through how the business model and the deployment would work for ambulance service run by the city of Peoria or in tandem with some of our private partners. From then, of course, we've had a series of updates, including a study session in January and the City Manager's reports in February of this year as well. Ultimately, as you know, the initial certificate necessity has been signed by the Director of the Department of Health Services, which is great news for us. With that, I thought it would be a good time for us to really give you an update on the implementation, as well as talk about the budget amendment and why the timing of that. And so with it, I'd like to introduce really who's helped spearhead this, our EMS Chief, Jim Bratcher.
Thank you, Mr. Tyne. Thank you, Mayor and Council. It is my pleasure to be able to present to you the proposal for a budget amendment which would allow us to move forward with the certificate of necessity in ambulance transportation services implementation in the city of Peoria. A quick overview of what we will present to you is a planned ambulance service model, a timeline for the approval process, and moving forward, our implementation efforts. And we'll detail the budget amendment request and the implementation behind that, and talk a little bit about next steps moving forward from this point on. Our mission has always been, and continues to be, and will in the future continue to be, to provide dedicated, reliable, and consistent ambulance service for the citizens of residents of Peoria. What has happened recently is the environment has changed, and opportunities were presented. And those opportunities, as Mr. Swenson mentioned, is we now hold an initial certificate of necessity, which is essentially the business license, the approval from the regulatory agency, which is the Arizona Department of Health Services, to provide ambulance transportation services in the city of Peoria. That enables us to go forward with a deployment structure which ensures that we can consistently provide the highest level of service for our community and continually meet minimal response times in delivering that service. That will also be supported by creating business systems, the training program, and the performance criteria for which we can effectively manage and develop that operation. And behind or simultaneously with all this, we continue to work collaboratively with the private ambulance partner to phase in the program and continue uninterrupted service delivery as we move forward. A brief overview of the timeline. We started this process June 25th, actually started a little bit before June 25th with the preparation. June 25th, we submitted the application, and February 2nd, we were very happy to hear the news, as Mr. Tyne mentioned, that the director approved our application to provide ambulance transport services and granted the initial CON. The initial CON gives us permission to move forward. The next step in that process is to have at least one fully equipped ambulance which has been inspected by the Arizona Department of Health Services. At that point, we receive a CON number. That CON is essentially finalized at that point. That allows us to move forward and begin to implement and apply for Medicare and other health insurance approvals, which are essential to the process as we build that out. And the Medicare approval process can take up to six months as we move forward. The Department of Health Services realizes that this is a fairly large undertaking, but there is the expectation from the department that we will move forward as soon as reasonably possible to implement that certificate of necessity. Our management approach to this will be a phased-in approach, and again, with collaboration with the private partners, with no interruption in service delivery. The first phase which this budget amendment addresses is where we will implement two full-time ambulances with one non-staffed reserve backup ambulance for a total of three. Ultimately, the ultimate build-out plan over several phases would be to have full, excuse me, five full-time ambulances in service with two reserve vehicles and a staffing model of one EMT and one paramedic per ambulance. That staffing model allows us to actually deliver service in a more effective way in that we can maintain continuity of care amongst the department providers, but that also allows more availability of the first response unit, the engines, and the ladder companies to stay available in their service areas for a longer, with a greater availability to respond. This is a full revenue recovery model over time, and the start-up costs have been identified in our funding models, and that is part of the full recovery model as we move forward. Our budget amendment request would be for the acquisition of three ambulances, the staffing and the training, academy and paramedic training, 14 firefighters, and the equipment for the ambulances and for those personnel, a management captain position to oversee the operations and implementation of the service, and a billing position to make sure, or position with billing to make sure we maintain the infrastructure and the quality assurance as we move forward and develop the revenue models. Our next steps in implementation would be if we can maintain our timeline and build out, we anticipate two ambulances in service in the late fall of 2016. We'll continue to work in partnership with the private ambulance provider, again, to maintain service levels through the transition, and we will have additional funding included in the fiscal year '17 budget supplemental as we move forward and continue to develop. I think it's important to note also that by doing this, we've realized a cost efficiency model based upon your, the budget of last year or this current fiscal year with the six paramedic positions plus the mid-year funding and your support there. We are able to put people in a training program and train our paramedics, and with that strategy, we have a significant cost savings in overtime and backfill cost moving forward as we strategically train and then send, bring people out in the field and then train, send the other folks into training. And I believe that our next slide, before we get to questions, if I could take a moment, I would like to, on behalf of Chief Reese and the Peoria Fire Medical Department, extend our sincere thanks and gratitude to everyone who has contributed to this project. Although I have the pleasure and opportunity to present to you, this has truly been a citywide effort with expertise across departments that have contributed substantially to that. Mr. Swenson for his leadership and guidance, Mr. Tyne for staying with us every step of the way, and your guidance through the process. The Finance Department and the Budget Department, and a special recognition for Mr. Barry Hogg, who has spent countless hours going over the financials and re-going over the financials. The Legal Department and moving forward procurement, the Materials Management folks will be integral, and Human Resources, all have contributed to the success of this project. And ultimately, our sincere gratitude for the council, for your support and guidance as we move through. We are truly excited to have this opportunity to increase our level of service and offer this to our community. Thank you. And with that, are there any questions?
And Jim, I have to say that we would not be at this place without your leadership and the great technical expertise and reputation you have throughout the valley and with the state on this issue. So thank you.
Thank you for the kind words.
Thank you. And we certainly appreciate those kind words and know that it really took everybody in this whole city to come up with such a game changer, and you know what? It's going to be a game changer for the care that our citizens are going to receive. So, so well worth it. So I echo your thanks to everyone. And we will start with Vice Mayor Binzbacher.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to congratulate you and everyone involved for a job well done. Congratulations. I'm thrilled, really looking forward to this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Finn.
I just want to echo Councilmember Binzbacher's comments there. I think it's a great thing for the citizens to make sure that we are putting them in the best care and taking care of them. I did have one follow-up question to your presentation, though. The full cost recovery, approximately when do we see us moving into that, that model timeframe-wise? If you mentioned it and I missed it, I apologize.
For ongoing cost, approximately three years for full recovery for the start-up cost, we're looking at about five years. There is lag in medical billing, so that first year will really not show up probably until the second year, and then from there on out, will stabilize.
Okay, great. Thank you. Great job. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Patena.
Thank you, Mayor. I echo your sentiments. I think this is a real game changer for Peoria. Makes me feel good that our citizens are going to be served by Peoria Fire and Medical. They do top-notch work, and I'm very excited about that. My question is this, you may have answered it and I didn't pick up on it, but are the paramedics also going to be firefighters, or are they, can be trained just as paramedics?
Our implementation plan is for the paramedics to be firefighters. Actually, over time, that gives us more flexibility in the workforce, greater flexibility in staffing, and we feel that overall cost over time by having interchangeable personnel is the most efficient model moving forward.
Anyone else? Okay, I just want to say one more thing to the people who might be watching from home. Our ambulance service here in Peoria and the valley has been being handled by one company. That means one company, a monopoly, if you will, and their determination of how our citizens are cared for and transported was completely in their hands. And they are in business to create a profit. That's what individual businesses do, and you know, more power to them. But we are in business to make sure that our citizens are cared for in the most efficient way that they can be cared for, and we want to make sure that there is not a lapse in that care because of profit, because of a monopoly, for any, for any reason. We want to make sure that our citizens are cared for. And so for that reason, we are undertaking our own ambulance company from now on in the city of Peoria. And we are starting that today, and it is really, really great news, and it is for the greater good, and that is the only reason that we are doing this. The good news again, though, is that it'll be 100% cost recovery, so there won't be any cost to the taxpayers in addition to what has already been happening. So it's great all the way around, and I'm very, very thankful that we're starting this now. It's the dawn of a new day. So thank you very much. And with that, Mr. Swenson, is there anything else? Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, this is an action item.
Yep.
Oh, my gosh. Do I have a motion?
I'll motion.
All right, council, please vote. And it passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is Call to the Public for Non-Agenda Items. And I do have two speaker request forms. If anyone else would like to speak, please fill out a form and put it in the bin. I will start with Mr. Sam Finch. Please come up to the podium and state your address for the record.
My address is 9207 West Mescal Street, 91st Avenue in Peoria, basically.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
I was wondering, I would, I was wondering if the city would like to do me a, I'm sorry to cry to the city about my problems, but I was wondering if there would be a law that we could pass to prohibit, to make it against the law for you to have a rooster in the city of Peoria. My neighbor has a rooster, and it starts crowing about 5:15, 5:30. It crows all day. It starts an hour before the sun even comes up. And I did a little research, I don't mind if, you know, my research showed me that you don't need a rooster to have your chickens lay eggs. The only thing that I can see that you would want a rooster for would be to irritate your neighbor, which it is doing. That is basically my crybaby problem. Thank you for listening.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Swenson, would you like to have somebody contact him?
Yes, Mr. Tyne, would you speak with Mr. Finch and get his information? And we'll make sure to follow up Mr. Finch on your concern. You bet.
All right, next speaker request form is from James Dibler. Please come up to the podium and state your address for the record.
Hello, I am James Dibler. I am going to school at Arizona State University. I live on 3730 West Tucky Lane, Phoenix, Arizona. There is a adult shop next to the Donallos Pizza and the Animal House above on 51st Avenue and Northern Avenue. This is inappropriate for the neighborhood and the northern light shopping center. They sell nannies, adult toys, and luxury at this store. We need more restrictions on adult shops operating in the city of Peoria, Glenville, and Phoenix. This adult shop will cause the neighborhood to go downhill. The Bushfire Foundation has found that sex businesses can harm the entire community through negative century efforts. Such adds increased crime, decreased property values, and urban life. Adult-only businesses should operate in industrial areas, not nearby neighborhoods. The adult shop is a bad influence for women and children. There are women getting into the adult industry, and these women have become bad influence on other people. According to CNBC News, porn industry has begun a $97 million business mess. We need the city of Phoenix and the state of Arizona to regulate adult shops so women don't get into the adult industry. In Peoria and Thompson, they don't have any adult shops in nearby neighborhoods. I am against adult shops in the valley since as council media scholars and adult bodies. The city of Glenville is already taking care of the problem because they are removing banners used by the adult shops. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, sir. All right, we will now move on to reports from City Manager, Mr. Swenson.
Thank you, Mayor Carlet. I just have one report this evening, and it's a video. And it, of course, the council is well aware that each year when we begin our spring training season, the first game is our charity game through our outstanding partnership with the Peoria Diamond Club. This year, the inaugural game, the charity game, was even a little more special because at the beginning, we rededicated the stadium with a plaque ceremony, and I believe we have the video of that.
Welcome to our 23rd season of spring training at the Peoria Sports Complex. Yes, a great applause. Cactus League home to the Seattle Mariners and the San Diego Padres. Today, we will reveal the bronze plaque that memorializes the most recent and significant construction improvements here at the sports complex.
To the Mariners and the Padres, a really big and warm thank you for sharing a dream with us for the last 23 years. It is so meaningful, and you can tell when you walk in there how much it matters, not only to all of us here, but all of the citizens in the city of Peoria and all of our fans.
On behalf of the Seattle Mariners Ownership Group, our players, our front office folks, I just want to thank the city of Peoria for all of the work that they've done over many years to make Peoria Stadium, in my opinion, the best facility in all of the Cactus League. It really is an outstanding facility, and it's a tribute to all of the things that the city has done and continues to do.
If you think about it, at the end of this agreement, it's going to be a 40-year relationship between the Seattle Mariners, the city of Peoria, and the San Diego Padres, and that's pretty incredible. So we appreciate everything that, we appreciate everything that's done on behalf of the Padres and the Mariners, and we look forward to the relationship continuing for a long, long time. And I've had a number of people who have been out here already from San Diego that have approached the new ballpark in our complex and the Mariners side and have said, it looks like a new facility, not just an improved facility.
The Arizona Sports and Tourism Authority, or ASTA, is proud to be a partner with the city of, with the city of Peoria, also with the Peoria Sports Complex. This facility has provided a blueprint to other jointly-used spring training facilities and is absolutely a model of excellence.
The mayor reveals.
Can't top that. That's all I have for tonight.
Very majestic. Wow. That's great. Okay, we're going to move on to reports from City Council. Youth Council Liaison Bowden.
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing to report today. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Patena.
Thank you, Mayor. Last week, I attended an awards dinner, I think it was the Peoria Education Association, where they honored Chief Roy Minter with the Visionary Award. I believe that that was the most prestigious award of the night. They had a great video that they did on the chief, and he gave a great speech afterwards. And so I just wanted the chief to know that he made all of us here in Peoria very proud. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Edwards.
Thank you, Mayor. Last week, I did attend the charity game, and it was a great, great event and a great game. It was nice to see so many fans out enjoying our new amenities at the ballpark. So ask all the public to continue going to those games. We have a couple more weeks of spring training, so get out and see a game. The weather is just beautiful. Last week, I also attended the, or the week before last, I attended Bravo Peoria at the Sunrise Library. It was great to see so many people out buying some of the books for some of the schools. Again, thanks to the library for putting on that great event. And last week, I had the distinct honor of representing, along with Vice Mayor Binzbacher, the city of Peoria at the National League of Cities and Conferences in DC. I will say that even though the conferencing was great, it didn't compare to the honor that I was able to take on. I was invited to the White House for some private meetings, one with the Deputy Secretary of Intergovernmental Affairs, our Director of National Drug Policy for the President of the United States, along with the Special Assistant to the President on Education. And I was able to spend some one-on-one time with these folks and really stress the importance of what they were trying to do and what was important to Peoria. So I'm hoping by culminating those meetings that something will come of substance back to the city of Peoria and to the state of Arizona. So, thank you.
Great, what an honor. Congratulations. Vice Mayor Binzbacher?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. On March 5th, I attended Sidewinder Little League's opening day ceremonies, and that was actually at Sunset Park in Vistancia, and I have to say, having attended that as a Little League parent for many years, it has grown to just unbelievable heights, and I think there were over 1,000 people there. It was very well-attended, and just, it was fantastic to see so many people and families come together, and also, it was well-attended by city folks. The mayor was there, our chief of police, and then we had John Sefton and other community services team members there with the booth and renderings of our new northern Peoria Community Park, and it drew a lot of interest. We had a lot of citizens visiting that booth, asking a lot of questions, sharing input. It was definitely very meaningful to them, and I think we were able to continue to gain a lot of very meaningful citizen input, so that was very exciting. I, too, along with Councilmember Edwards and Councilmember Leonie, attended the National League of Cities in DC, and I, it was an honor, and so many experiences, I can't touch on all of them, but I, too, was honored to be able to visit the Pentagon for a Department of Defense meeting, and very proud to represent Peoria as part of the West Valley Partners Group in support of Luke Air Force Base, where the training, the home of the training for the F-35s, and offered our support and had some great dialogue about what we can continue to do as collectively as West Valley Cities to support that training effort, as long, as well as what's happening at the Barry Goldwater Range, which is, you know, very well-known, the premier range throughout the country where critical training is being done to serve our country and protect our freedom, so they were fantastic discussions, and there were also different sessions that I was able to attend, not quite as exciting as visiting the Pentagon and some of the other features in DC, but meaningful sessions, and one of the things that I absolutely learned was that Peoria is doing a lot of things right, without a doubt. When you talk about, I had not, just what I learned in the sessions, but in discussions I had with other elected officials in other parts of the country and certainly in the valley, that with our quality of life and the Sonoran Preservation Program, a lot of comments about just how impressive it is that Peoria is showing their commitment to that. Our community policing, and I also heard specific acknowledgement, which I really thought was very, very, just a huge compliment, about how our council looks and feels right now as far as a, just a cohesive group of leaders really putting our citizens first and working beautifully with our department director, so that was a great compliment, and we are definitely at the table, and it's a very, very exciting time. It was absolutely an honor to participate in that. Thank you, Mayor.
Great. Councilmember Finn.
Just one quick comment. I also wanted to congratulate Chief Minter on a very well-deserved award. If you had an opportunity to hear him speak, he always represents himself, he represents the city, and makes us proud each and every day, and it was just such a well-deserved award, I just wanted to say congratulations, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you, Mayor. We're very, very proud here in Old Town Peoria that for four weeks, we're having food trucks downtown on Friday night. We've already had two, and I know at least several thousand of you were down here, so you've already figured that out. We have two more weeks, and this coming Friday night, we will also be having a movie in the park, so be sure and bring your kids out for that one, and just come. It really has a very wonderful small-town atmosphere and good food besides. Also, the distillery is open now and doing very, very well. I attended Bravo Peoria a couple of Saturdays ago, and what an amazing event that is, and kudos to the library, friends of the library, who largely sponsor that, and there were art activities, there were reading activities, there was one of the funniest kids performers I've ever seen who managed to get eaten by this rubber balloon ball that he had blown up. I'm still not sure how that happened, but he had us all, young and old, in stitches. Also, a reminder, just, I know you already know this, but the Dolly Sanchez Easter Egg Hunt in two weeks has been moved to our downtown park here, Centennial Park, so don't go up to the sports complex expecting the Easter Bunny because he or she, it, will have been down here in Centennial Park. And then one other comment, I'm lumping two things together here because I really want to talk about Peoria's outstanding culture of theater here in Peoria. I attended the Education Visionary Awards down at Arizona Broadway Theater a week or so ago, whenever it was, and again, very, very honored to have our own chief awarded this high honor, and again, as Mike said, he, he just makes us all so proud when he speaks and shares personal stories and so on, but I was also just so impressed with that theater, and we got to see snippets of Fiddler on the Roof, which is their production right now. The lobby is gorgeous. If you haven't seen it, it's a huge panorama mural of like the 1920s New York, and then this last Saturday night, I was down here at Theater Works, which is right downtown in Old Town here, and again, they, they're 30 years now, they have leapfrogged from one building to another, but they've been here in Old Town for about 10 or 11 years, and they, they had talented actors and singers who did some songs from over the years of shows that they've presented, and so if you are, and children's programming, I can't say enough, my own grandchildren have grown up in children's programming here at Theater Works. So both theaters just really do us proud. It's not very many communities of our size especially that have two thriving community theaters, and when I say community, they have professional actors and all the, you just won't be disappointed. So that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Leonie.
Yes, on March the 2nd, I also attended the dedication and the opening charity game at the sports complex. I represented from the Mariners and the Padres were there at the Cactus League. I don't have to go into detail and tell you what they said because you already saw it, so they beat me to the punch. The only question I get is, where's the old plaque? Anybody know?
I'm sorry?
Didn't they have an old plaque before the new one?
The old plaque is still hanging where it was on another wall.
Oh, plaque, I'm sorry. I missed, I wasn't, I didn't hear you. There's actually, it's now the third plaque, the one that was at the dedication is the third plaque on the front, so the old one, and then one from ASTA, and then the new one.
Oh, I must be blind because I didn't see it. Anyway, Friday, March the 11th, I represented mayor and the council at a River Cutting grand opening at Smart Gym in Park West. It's a brand-new gym, and it's quite big, and it's got all brand-new stuff in there, and they got some good trainers there, so if you want to go in there and work out, I guess they'll give you a ticket, you can work out for maybe like four or five days free, but then after that you got to pay, but it's a good gym, and I think that everybody should go down there, at least go on a tour and take a look at it. God bless each and every one of you, and God bless America.
Thank you. Youth Council Liaison Camacho?
Thank you, Mayor. I have no reports tonight. My throat's sore.
Okay, thank you. And from me, I would simply like to wish my husband a very happy birthday.
I would have said that to it, I know.
And with that, we are adjourned.